I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Goodyear to be held on Wednesday, December 19th. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Let the record show that all members of the commission, with the exception of Commissioner Miller, are present at this meeting. And now, the next item of business is I'd like the approval of the minutes of a special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on December 5th, 2007. Can I have a motion, please?
I have to so approve the minutes.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lortano and a second from Commissioner DeBrocker. Vice Chair DeBrocker, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay. Next order of business is public comments. If anybody would like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda, now is the time to address the commission. If you do want to do that, I ask you to fill out one of these cards and come to the podium. Does anybody want to speak? Seeing none, okay, we'll move on. Disclosure of ex parte communications. Anybody have ex parte communications they would like to report? Commissioner Bay?
I'm just smiling. We spoke to Mr. Bowles just before we started, but I don't think that constitutes ex parte, so.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner Lacks? Okay, I have some ex parte communications. I spoke with Alan Franco on the historical district, and I've spoken with the Shermers and representatives from Fry's several times during this past year of 2000. Dates are beyond me, but I have spoken to those people. I apologize. Okay, moving on. Next order of business is new business. We have no old business. Wow, that's cool. First case is, I'm going to open the public hearing for case 07-200-0002, the Airport Gateway Business Center rezone. And this is a public hearing to request a rezone of 25.4 acres located a half-mile northwest of the corner of Litchfield Road in Yuma, from light industrial to planned area development. And since I've opened the public hearing, Katie Wilkins will make the presentation for staff.
Thank you Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission. The subject property is known as the Airport Gateway Business Center and is located just north of the justice facility we're currently in, north of the Christ Evangelical Lutheran Church, south of Adapto, on the west side of Litchfield Road and the east side of the railroad tracks. The site has an approved final plat, which was approved by council on September 10th of this year. Commission reviewed the preliminary plat for the site at the February 7th, 2007 commission meeting, and the developer has already begun grading the site for the roadways. We also have a site plan in for review for the first lot of this development, but it has not been approved yet. The final PAD is intended to be used as an overlay district to provide flexibility in industrial land use districts. The Airport Gateway Business Center PAD will allow a mix of typical uses that are typical of a business park. The PAD provides three land use categories. The flex industrial-commercial category, the light industrial, and general industrial. The flex industrial-commercial is planned to be closest to Litchfield Road. It includes office, wholesale, and limited retail, and limited personal and business services as uses. The light industrial land use is planned for the interior lots closer to the existing industrial uses that exist in the area, and this would be similar uses that are allowed in an I-1 zoning district. The general industrial is similar to the light industrial category, but will allow a few more intense uses. The general industrial is designated on one 6.33 acre parcel on the northern portion of the site, and it possibly could accommodate a larger user. The PAD has requested a deviation from the zoning ordinance development standards with regards to setbacks, to allow rear setbacks to have a zero-foot setback, and as well as not requiring landscape setbacks when there is a security fence on the edge of the property. Staff was in favor of this request because otherwise alleys could be created which could cause loitering or littering problems on the sites. No other deviations from the industrial development standards were requested as part of the PAD. A citizen review meeting was held on November 13th, 2007. There were seven surrounding property owners in attendance. There were several questions, but all of the property owners expressed support for the rezone. Notice of the rezone was also given at the November 14th Historic Goodyear Neighborhood Meeting, and no objections or concerns were noted at that meeting. The rezone is consistent with the general plan designation of light industrial and with the surrounding land uses, so staff requests approval of this request. I can answer any questions at this time, and the applicant is also available for any questions you might have.
Questions of staff, Ms. Lortano.
I like the fact it's getting developed. I just have a question. I know the unit dynamics had some issues with EPA. Is any of this land involved in that?
No, that area is mostly to the north and the east, I believe, and it doesn't affect the site.
I just wanted to make it simple. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I have a question, Katie. Could you, the zero setback and the landscape setback, could you maybe, if this is on Elmo, could you just draw a little bit of an illustration of what they mean? Because I'm having a little problem conceptualizing exactly how that works.
Well, if there was an industrial use that had a security wall around it-
Okay.
-which is actually proposed for lot number one, if you had a setback, like a 20-foot setback, that wall might be located here, and if the building next to it had that same foot setback, it would be located here. And when you have that, you create an alley, and a lot of times junk gets thrown down there, it doesn't get taken care of properly. Sometimes you can have situations with graffiti and loitering in those areas, where if you allow the security wall to locate on the property line, so it's a shared security wall, then you eliminate that alley.
So this is basically like fences around residential houses that we see in normal development?
And this is the same situation in Astoria Crossing Business Park. I don't know if you've seen the storage center that's going up. That was built right on the zero property line, so the buildings next to it are using their buildings as a security fence.
Okay.
So this happens in other industrial districts.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions of staff? Okay, the applicant presentation, is that Karen or Dustin? All right, Mr. Jones, please come up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Dustin Jones with Diagardi Flynn Jones, 2940, North Litchfield Road, Goodyear, Arizona. Here with my client, Pete Tobin, who's the director of development for this project. He's here representing his company, flew down from Colorado today to be here for the hearing, staying at the Wigwam, and is very happy to get out of the Colorado weather. Appreciate the time the commission's given us tonight. We concur with all of staff's recommendations and stipulations, most notably the last one that preserves the landscaping and mature trees along Litchfield Road, which are part of the heritage of the community. So as we have strived to develop this property and transition and put more commercial out on Litchfield Road and push the industrial back, we believe that landscaping is consistent. Derek, do you have any questions of my client? He's here to answer those as well. With that?
Questions of the applicant. Anybody? Questions of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're winning. Okay. At this point, is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this case? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing and ask for commission discussion concerning this case. Are there any questions or anything the commission would like to bring up on this? In that case, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the case, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case 07-200-00022. We request to rezone approximately 25.44 acres from the light industrial zoning district to the final PAD zoning for industrial development known as Airport Gateway Business Center.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Lacks and a second from Commissioner Bay. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, ayes have it, 6-0. Thank you very much. Next case is case 07-200-00015, the Western Avenue rezone. This is a public hearing to request a rezone of 2.6 acres generally located northwest corner of Litchfield Road and Western Avenue from Public Facilities District to a planned area development. The applicant is the City of Goodyear. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Katie Wilkins will make the staff presentation.
Thank you Commissioner Gelsner, members of the commission. This is a city-initiated request to rezone 2.66 acres at the northeast corner of Litchfield Road and Western Avenue. The site currently includes the city's dispatch center, the Public Works Administration Building, Hope's Closet, Casa Linda Furniture, and an income tax preparation business. The site is surrounded by the Historic Goodyear Neighborhood District to the north and east, Goodyear Tire and Good Dale True Value to the south, and the Goodyear Southwest Center to the west. The site is currently zoned Public Facilities District, which allows facilities operated by the government or school districts. The site appears to have been zoned PFD since the city incorporated. The commercial uses on the property are currently considered legal non-conforming, which basically means that they're currently allowed to continue as-is, but it significantly limits or prevents their expansion or redevelopment. They could not change out the business or expand the building in any way. This issue was first brought to the attention of the city when a property owner came to the city with plans for redeveloping a vacant commercial building on Western Avenue. The city would not be able to approve these redevelopment plans or allow a new commercial business in this vacant site unless the site is rezoned. The PAD will permit uses that are allowed in the PFD zoning district, so the city's facilities will be able to operate as they do today. The Western Avenue PAD sets development standards that correspond to the existing development. The PAD will provide for zero front-side and rear setbacks, except when it's located next to a residential property line. Also, because of the pedestrian-oriented development, the PAD is reducing parking requirements by 25%. The city staff is also currently trying to secure a public parking lot, and if we're successful with that, we may be able to reduce parking standards even more on a case-by-case basis. There are existing design guidelines for Western Avenue in the city's Design Guidelines Manual, and this PAD does expand on those guidelines by establishing standards that address appropriate colors, materials, roof lines, landscape materials. Basically, we want new development to be cohesive with the existing development on the site. A citizen review meeting was held on August 23rd, 2007. The two surrounding property owners attended the meeting and gave their support for the request. We've also brought this rezone to the Historic Goodyear Neighborhood Meeting several times, and we've heard nothing but support and haven't heard any dissent from the surrounding neighborhood for this rezone. There are four private property owners on this site besides the City of Goodyear, and all of the property owners have received copies of the PAD and notice of this rezoning. The city has received letters of consent from three of the property owners for the rezone. One of the property owners has not sent the city a letter of consent, but they do not object to the PAD at this time. The current PFD zoning is not appropriate for this site, and the current PAD zoning will be consistent with the general plan designation of community commercial. This rezone is also consistent with the goals of the Litchfield Corridor Revitalization Plan. The city is currently working on trying to revitalize this area of the city by providing facade grants, seeking out grants to improve infrastructure, and hopefully aesthetics of the area. So this rezone would help further this redevelopment of the area, so staff requests that this PAD be approved. And I also just wanted to take a quick moment and thank the Economic Development Department who have worked with planning staff on this and have done a lot of legwork contacting property owners and helping us coordinating with Avondale, learning about their efforts, and they've been a big help, and I want to thank them for that. So that concludes my presentation, and I can take any questions at this time.
Okay. Since the applicant is the City of Goodyear, Katie's going to take both sets of questions from the commission. Are there questions? Ms. Lortano.
Just briefly, where would, you said you're looking to get another parking lot? Because I can't, I'm just looking, there's a lot of parking spaces.
Yeah.
Where would you find another parking lot? How would you do that?
There are some lots, and I actually don't know the exact lot, but there are some parking lots owned by, I think, is it Good Dale? Possibly, well, one thing would be possibly using Good Dale Tires parking lot since they shut down at 5:00, and if there's restaurants locating on the site, we might be able to do some type of parking sharing where, you know, anyone can use their parking lot. Or the Public Works Administration Building is right there, it's possible we could use their parking lot. We're looking into different options.
Okay, that's really close.
I mean, if we want to make this a destination, we'd really like to find some city parking.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted, because I've been behind, and there's no parking, so the buildings then could expand further.
Yeah, this is true value, and so this is their parking lot, and there are some parking lots back here.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, would this preclude, and this is maybe kind of off the wall, but, you know, in two or three years or whenever, all of the new city facilities are built at the city center, I'm assuming Public Works and the Police Department are going to move out of this area. When that happens, would this preclude one developer from coming in to try and acquire all of this property and do something spectacular?
This would not preclude it. The design guidelines and the PAD development standards do highly discourage tearing down these buildings. What we've heard from the community and commission and council is that this is our only historic area, and so it's important to us, and we want to do what we can to preserve it. If someone came to the area with a really great proposal, we would probably suggest that they go through a PAD amendment, just because that would be such a big change from what we've heard from the community about this area. But it would in no way stop something like that happening. And also, you brought up a good point, but if the city ever does want to vacate their properties, they wouldn't be able to market the properties unless they were zoned some type of commercial-type use rather than PFD.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Bay?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up with Commissioner Williams' questions. There's a couple of things. First of all, Katie, you did these drawings, huh?
Yes.
They got your name on them, so.
[laughing]
All right, good job. I noticed that on some of the facilities, the structures overlap lots, and so, for example, there's one structure has two lots, and doesn't appear to be a Z lot or anything like that. So I wonder if while we're going through this process, is there a requirement as well for these lots to be properly assigned, if you will, so that, so that when, in fact, you get to the point where you may be looking at doing some real redevelopment in the area, this doesn't become an issue? So I'm just wondering if that's a consideration. That's the first question.
Currently, we haven't considered that. That's something we certainly can consider. The lot lines shouldn't preclude any redevelopment or anything we've seen right now. If that, if it seemed like that were the case, we could definitely take a look at that, but we'll definitely look into that and see what we could do to clean up any issues.
And just to kind of follow up, the reason I said that is because we are looking at public use versus private use, and if, in fact, this whole area becomes a pad, then in fact, as we've seen in other PADs, lots are usually redefined so that the owner of a particular lot has some rights in terms of what they have to do. So I just thought I would mention that. The second thing that was on my mind is that there's some significant plans already within the City of Goodyear to redevelop the streetscape right there on, I believe that's Yuma.
Yes.
So will this, will this in fact impact, for example, the expansion of maybe the actual right-of-way or the reduction of the right-of-way to provide more actual property to these facilities so that they have more sidewalk space for maybe restaurants or whatever type of sidewalk activities? So I guess my question is, does this boundary encompass then any changes that may occur as a result of that redevelopment streetscape project?
I don't know if you can see, there's a lot that goes along right here over the sidewalk that's actually a lot that's owned by the City of Goodyear. It's technically not considered right-of-way.
Okay.
So that's our property, and we are looking at possibly working with private property owners to provide outdoor seating for a restaurant, but we could also use that to extend the sidewalk since that is owned by the City of Goodyear.
So then actually, that's a zero lot line then?
Yes.
So the sidewalks themselves are actually right-of-way, City of Goodyear?
Exactly. The sidewalk is technically a parcel.
Oh, really?
Yes, that's owned by the City of Goodyear.
Oh, okay.
And the angled parking, right?
Yeah, well, it kind of looks like half the angled parking is in this parcel and half of it is in the right-of-way.
Okay, all right. Well, those are the only things that concern me. I'm definitely in favor of redeveloping the area, so I just want to make sure that we cover all of the little things that may be problematic as we see development occur in the area.
We'll definitely look into this.
Thank you, Katie.
Any further questions on this side? Questions on this slide? I have a couple of quick questions. Katie, the alleyway behind that backs up on all the houses there, is that part of this parcel? Or is the alleyway?
That's a good question.
Because doesn't our, don't our trash trucks go down that alley to collect garbage?
Actually, they don't.
Or?
There's fencing all along this.
Right, okay, so the alleyway is part of this parcel then?
It should be part of that, and we can-
That's fine.
We can redraw that.
That's fine.
But again, that's City of Goodyear.
Okay, next question is a technical one. You said there's three out of four property owners have sent a consent letter to this, and the fourth one doesn't object but is not going to send the consent letter? Is that the way we understand it?
At this time, that's what we've been told.
Is there a particular reason why, and does it affect them? Or we're going, if we go through with this, they're part of it, anyway?
Would you like to?
We have a representative for the applicant, so I'm going to put him on the hot spot.
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Bowles, please identify yourself and who you're representing this time.
Ed Bowles, 702 East Osborne. I am very much the new kid on the block with respect to the Green Trust, which owns a small parcel within this overall PAD.
I'm sorry, what trust?
The Green Family Trust.
Thank you.
I was called the other day by their Normal Transactions Attorney, who works with them on things, but doesn't do zoning work, because the family representative was very confused, I think, by what was going on and what they were being asked to sign and not sign and so on. Bottom line, we requested and received information from Katie, which I then forwarded on to the client and their Normal Transaction Attorney. They have absorbed most of that. They're in discussions with another party who's very interested in the area and is very supportive of the PAD. Bottom line, I was authorized to say, if asked, as Katie's already said, that is, that the family is not objecting to the PAD, but they've not yet signed anything, and this issue may or may not become academic in the course of the next month or so before this case goes up to the city council.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Katie, I would like to make a comment. I have seen some redevelopment plans from Minneapolis when I lived up there, and a lot of other stuff when I was in graduate school, and I really want to say I really like what we are presenting, and I think it really does keep the flavor of what was Goodyear a while ago, and I think it will enhance this area. So I'm very, very supportive of this, and I think I'd like to commend staff on this presentation. And in that case, if there's no more questions of staff or the applicants, I'm going to ask, anybody from the public like to speak on this matter? And since I see none, I'm going to close the public hearing on this. Any council discussion, or, excuse me, any commission? All right. [inaudible].
Moving us there fast, man.
Have to get elected first. Okay, any commission discussion on this? In that case, I would like a motion on the Western Avenue rezone, please.
Tell them a little bit, you care.
I have a motion from Vice Chairman DeBrocker and a second from Commissioner Williams. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to open, oops, did I miss something?
A little bit. I missed that C.
Okay, we're doing, okay, I got the right one. Okay. Next case is 07-300-0005, Culver's Drive-Thru Restaurant Special Use Permit. Public hearing to consider the request for a use permit to allow convenience use for a drive-thru facility on 1.47 acres of property generally located northwest corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell Road within the Cobblestone Creek Commercial Center. And the applicant is Mccone Building Corporation, and we are going to open the public hearing, and Anna Lacklander will give us the staff presentation.
Thank you Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission. The aerial photo you're looking at shows the location for the proposed Culver's Restaurant site. The site is located in the Cobblestone Creek Commercial Center at the northwest corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway, and is in Phase 8 of the Palm Valley Master Plan. Hopefully, you're able to see this all right. Here you can see a conceptual site plan for the Culver's Restaurant site. The application is requesting a use permit to allow convenience use, which is for the drive-thru component of the site. The conceptual site plan you can see here reflects how the owner intends to develop the site. Of course, here you see the restaurant with the drive-thru coming in at the northern side off of Pebble Creek Parkway and wrapping around the back on the western side. The drive-thru lane, as you can see, you might be able to see, is a little bit wider at the egress. This particular restaurant, based on the Midwest, is a little bit higher-end fast food restaurant, kind of old-fashioned restaurant, and you order at the menu board, pay at the window, and then you actually park in wait here in the order waiting area. The site is surrounded by commercial uses to the south. It's the rest of the Cobblestone Creek Commercial Center. To the east, it is the Market at Astoria Falls, and there's also the Goodyear Center Point Commercial Center. On the western side of the site, you see here, we have the RID Canal, we have a 100-foot easement on that side, and then there's an open space tract. On the other side of that, there is the Palm Valley Phase 8 Residential Development. No development has taken place in that site yet, although it has been platted. The nearest property line to the site is about 350 feet from the Culver's property line, so there is adequate distance from that site. And then here, these are a little bit dark, but you can see the proposed elevations for the Culver's Restaurant. This side you'll see is the side you will see when you drive down Pebble Creek Parkway. Staff is recommending approval of use permit, subject to stipulations in the staff report, as the proposed use is compatible with the planned uses within the area. It will not be a detriment to surrounding properties or persons. The parcel is adequate in size, and it will have sufficient vehicular access onto Pebble Creek Parkway. This concludes the staff presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions. Additionally, Chris McGuire, representing Mccone Building Corporation, can answer any questions as well.
All right. Questions of staff, Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, and could you go back to that original chart and show us where the speaker is, where they ordered?
Sorry. The site plan?
Yeah, that one.
You can see, it's not hard to stand here, but you see it on your site plan. The pre-order board is here-
Okay.
And the menu board is here.
It's in away from the street is all. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Bay?
Chairman Gelsner, thank you. Uh, Katie, this is not directly related to the case, but, uh, this...
Anna.
Anna, oh, I'm sorry. What did I say?
It's Katie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, Anna, I should be looking and then I'd know. Um, what, what, um, I know that this particular property, uh, butts up against the R I D canal and I don't know if we've had any discussions at all about how we're treating that canal in terms of, uh, aesthetics and, uh, I wonder, has, do, can you tell me if we've had any discussions about that? Uh, for example, uh, will there be, uh, a C M U block wall there? I mean, to, to block that off or is that desirable?
Commissioner, very members of the commission, um, we, I know that the applicant had shown before, um, there would be trees, there would not be a block wall separating the site from the R I D canal. And over here, there will be quite a bit, um, on, on the other side of the hundred-foot, um, canal easement, there will be quite a bit of landscaping, um, within the flood area.
Okay, I wanna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the chairman's...
Go ahead.
...opportunity to piggyback right on top of Commissioner Bay's. And I was looking at this plan and I was looking at where the patio is and while, you know, the patio is very convenient for the people to walk out, um, this is one of our few waterfront properties here in Goodyear and, um, we can out Scottsdale, Scottsdale if we need to. And, uh, so my, I really will encourage the applicant to consider, um, some of the area along the waterfront to be, have additional patios and additional seating, um, put out there so that the eight months out of the year that it's wonderful to live in Arizona, we can have people actually sitting out there and enjoying watching the R I D canal go by. So I, I would strongly encourage that and I'm gonna jump right on that with Commissioner Bay, cause I think that was the one thing that I saw that I thought was lacking in this plan.
Chairman Gelsner, members of the commission, I know that this site, um, with some of the constraints with the, uh, configuration of the site, um, it was, it's a little bit difficult. There was a mention in your, um, packets about, you know, even just locating the trash enclosure without having too many reverse movements and everything. Um, we're going to reevaluate that as well, um, but I can defer to the applicant if you would like to hear.
Sure, but I, I wanna let, let staff, I mean, the commission on this side, if they have any questions first for you.
Sure.
Okay, let's, let the applicant come up and make a presentation.
Good evening, my name is Chris McGuire and thank you for your time today. I like your idea. The, uh, question is, as we have dealt with this in the past along bike paths, would you consider perhaps simple little patio areas as show up here where the, we're gonna be relocating the dumpster crew? We have a couple of opportunity areas where create outdoor dining, little landscaping around it.
We strongly recommend, we strongly encourage it.
Okay.
It goes with our blessing.
Okay.
I speak for the commission.
Our only request would be is that, that is, an area in which people can go to at their own discretion to logistically run food to people. Culver's makes, is prepared to order.
Right.
As you order it, then it will be brought out to you within five minutes. So the issue is logistically running food to people that are...
No, 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 we, we, we don't wanna create extra work for you and, and the patio, the patio that's there is fine. We're just gonna raise the standards for you and say, put some benches and put a little patio and some other places, they can be freestanding. If people wanna use them, that's fine, your job is to clean up after them.
Okay.
That's about what, that's about what the extent of it. Any, I'm, I'm sorry, let me, let the commission ask questions of the applicant.
I have no questions, but I have a comment.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
Uh, you know, before we strongly encourage the developer to do something to beautify the canal, I, and I'm, I, you know, I haven't walked the canal, but there may be an obligation on the city's part or the irrigation district's part to do something to clean up the canal first.
They do, I mean, they, they drain the canal once a year and clean it out once a year.
There's not trash floating in it like there is along the canal farther west on McDowell, along McDowell Road?
I, you know, this is their main canal. I, I, you know, I, I mean, it borders Pebble, goes through Pebble Creek and I really haven't...
I mean, I love, I love the idea and I think it's great, but I, I, I think all the stakeholders have an obligation to work together to make it nice.
Okay. I take your comment under advisement and we will make sure it's in the minutes.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Ms. Laura Tino?
I just have a comment, cause I was thinking the same thing when you mentioned the Scottsdale, because that was one ugly canal till they started developing. That was, that was, that was, I mean, that was really ugly, so, you know, just benches, tables, I think it'd look nice.
Agreed.
I'd go.
Any other questions in that case? Okay, you're done.
Thank you.
Does anybody from the public like to, uh, make comment on this case? In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any commission discussions other than we'll make sure that Commissioner Bay?
Just one thing, uh, when I, when I mentioned that comment, I was really thinking in terms of not just for this particular site, because the, the use permit has nothing to do with the canal, but I would like for the city to consider maybe some sort of overlay district or something so that, uh, all of the, uh, new construction and new facilities is coming in that area, may consider taking advantage of, uh, at least, well, as Scottsdale would call it, their riverfront, uh, but we know it's, we know it's an R I D canal, so it's something for us to consider and so that's, that's just from my heartfelt, I'll just staff to look at that and maybe bring something back to us.
Does, does staff wish to, you know, does, is, do we wish to have a waterfront ordinance or is that, is that, is that, is that an oxymoron here in Arizona?
Just Chairman, I, members of the commission, I, I think what I grasp that you're discussing is, is how can we, how can we do our development adjacent to these type of canals?
Mm-hmm.
And, and utilize them as outdoor spaces and aesthetically. And maybe we can come back in future time and discuss it in some more detail, but there are some great constraints.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one is, is like in the R I D canal, there's maintenance roads that they must maintain. S R P has very similar for their canals, uh, that are paramount, first of all, uh, and so no landscaping could occur. Scottsdale went through fifteen, twenty years prior to being able to, to do the project that they just recently did in the waterfront and that's with working with S R P, uh, in order to maintain access along the canal. Uh, there's a number of different issues. Also, grade is a difference. Most of these canals are raised higher up than adjacent properties, so you really can't even overlook the water in many cases, you know, for the canal. So, I, I think it is a worthy topic for future discussion and something that in our design review of these projects, we oftentimes look at, we generally find it's just a lot of constraints in order to make some of the things that we'd like to do happen, uh, but as we go through time, I think it is worthy us to look at that relative to the canals within our jurisdiction and see whether or not some discussions can occur with the district.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, and to that end, if you don't mind, that makes me think, well, maybe we ought to talk about maybe having second-story patio spaces or something so that they can overlook instead of look up. So, just a thought, just wanna throw that out there.
And have tower-top dining. Alright, and on that note, I'd like a motion, please. Commissioner Laura Tino?
I move, I move that we approve case number 07300-05 with all the recommendations and stipulations.
I'll second. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Laura Tino and a second from Commissioner Bay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it, seven-zero, thank you very much. Okay, next order of business is case... Six-zero, oh, yeah, six-zero, sorry. Uh, next order of business is case 07300-00004 Burger King Drive-Thru Restaurant Use Permit. A public hearing to consider a request for a use permit to allow a convenience use for Burger King on point eight-one acres generally located west of the southwest corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell area within the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace planned area development. I'm going to open the public hearing and Anna Lacklander will give us the staff presentation on this property.
Thank you Chairman Gelsner, I was the commission again. Uh, the aerial photo you're looking at now shows the location for the proposed Burger King site in the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace, um, P A D. Uh, the site is located in, as you said, in the southwest corner of the Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell Road intersection. Um, so the site we're just looking at is north here and it's north on here. On the site plan, I apologize for all the, um, editing clouds interfering on that, but on the site plan, uh, here you can see that the applicant, this application is also requesting a use permit to allow convenience use for the drive-thru component. This conceptual site plan reflects how the owner intends to develop this property. And we are looking at this pad here for the Burger King Restaurant. The Pebble Creek Village Marketplace overall master site plan was approved in January and so they are bringing a pad into this site. You can see the restaurant here with the drive-thru that goes, um, around the southern part of the site, um, onto the eastern part. Um, the order board or the preview board and the menu board are located here. Um, and this, excuse me, this site is surrounded entirely by commercial uses. Cobblestone, again, to the north, uh, Market at Straya Falls and Goodyear Center Point to the east and, uh, to the west of the site is the rest of the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace site. This site is also within the city center gateway overlay district, um, which requires expanded review for, uh, sites that have drive-thru components. Additional elements required for this expanded review such as traffic reports, economic impact report and landscape architecture and maintenance plans were all submitted with the master site plan, um, so all elements we feel have been met. And then here you can see, um, conceptual elevations for the Burger King. This would be the side that is facing McDowell Road. And then you can see the other elevations for the sides, the eastern and then the western side. Um, the building does incorporate slate into the development, which feels very nice and it abides by all Pebble Creek Village Marketplace design guidelines. Staff is recommending approval of use permit, subject to stipulations in the staff report, as the proposed use is compatible. It will not be a detriment to surrounding peo-, uh, persons or properties, is adequate in size and has sufficient vehicular access onto Pebble Creek Parkway. Uh, this concludes the staff presentation and staff is available to answer any questions. Additionally, Representative from Looker and Capello Architects is present and can answer any questions as well.
Okay, questions of staff? Commissioner Lacks?
Um, Anna, on page five of the staff report, it mentions a issue with the parking?
Correct.
Um, has that been, uh, since worked out or, or do we still have this incorrectly dimensioned, um, parking spaces and, and the additional issue of, of the parking outside of their immediate, um, control, I suppose?
Commissioner Lacks, members of the commission, uh, the parking is currently being worked out. Um, the applicant is responsible for what, for the limits of construction, um, as you can see by this line that goes around the drive-thru and around, um, just these parking areas in the, um, the pad. Um, the, their property line does extend into these parking sites, um, so we require that they show them as correct. It was overlooked in the master site plan that was approved in January. Uh, these parking stalls are a bit too short and so they are currently working that out with the master developer, um, try, you know, figuring out the, um, best alternative to either lengthening these, um, figuring out what to do with this, um, with this island here. Um, so we have required that they, it needs to be correct for the site plan. They have concurrently submitted a site plan that we are looking over, um, that we are reviewing and, um, it has obviously not been approved as of yet. They're currently working with the developer on that.
So then follow, so ultimately then, you know, for this, for this then to move forward, it wouldn't happen until the other, the site plan is...
Correct. We, we didn't want to hold up the use permit, um, because the, because the master site plan was approved and the parking spaces were dimension incorrectly. Uh, we felt even if something does occur with these parking spaces, they still have the agreements, you know, with the parking spaces adjacent that are not on their property line, that will most likely be more utilized more by customers that will just walk across this island instead of walking across the drive-thru which will probably be used by staff. So that will need to be addressed before any site plan is approved.
Okay, questions of staff? Commissioner Bay?
Chairman Gelsner, Anna. Uh, I know that we're really looking at this just for special use and for driving and such, uh, but I had a little concern about the fact that the facility itself sits considerably back from the street and typically, uh, there's some signage issues and I'm curious, uh, is, does this particular structure, uh, is it only gonna have signs on the building or within the master plan, is there a signage package that places signage out for visibility so that people know, well, here's Burger King and this is where I need to park?
Commissioner Bay, members of the commission, um, the signage obviously is not approved for this particular, um, pad within the overall site, but there was a sign package that has been approved through, uh, the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace that has monument signs located along McDowell Road.
Okay. I guess I was concerned about whether or not we're gonna have like a forty-foot tower sign saying, here's Burger King for freeway visibility, that sort of.
I don't remember the exact...
It has the name Goodyear on it.
There is one, uh, freeway pylon that was approved. I do not remember the exact dimensions of the, uh, freeway pylon, but that was approved.
Probably something like that.
Uh, Commissioner Bay, uh, you know, the sign package for the marketplace has the traditional multi-tenant monument signs. I believe there's one or two along Pebble Creek and probably one or two along McDowell. Uh, this tenant on this pad, as other tenants could have the option with a master developer to place their name. Uh, traditionally, you don't see this type of pad development having their name out on the monument sign, multi-tenant sign. Probably the, the wall signage is gonna be adequate enough for their identification.
Okay, that was my concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anna. Okay, questions of staff? Mr. Commissioner Williams?
The proposed bank next to it on the east side, is there, is there gonna be a drive-in facility there too?
There will be. Um, that is not part of the submission, but yes, there will be. They have come in for a pre-application meeting and they will need to have a, do a use permit submitted as well and then, um, a site plan, um...
I'm not sure if this is an appropriate question here tonight, but I, I guess I'm assuming we'll coordinate the traffic flow between the two drive-in facilities as we go forward.
Commissioner Williams, as part of the review of the traffic circulation for this use permit, we have looked at the prospective bank drive-through to the east as I can, and to make sure that, uh, that they both will work together and we believe that they can as currently laid out, but, but of course, we have not seen the application for the bank yet, but if it is in the, the preliminary configuration that we've seen, we believe that can be, it will be, be okay.
Thank you.
Okay, other, other questions of staff? Okay, would the applicant like to come up and make a presentation or talk about this? And if so, please come up to the podium and identify yourself. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Jeff Looker, Looker and Capello Architects, 27th East Southern in Tempe. I'm the architect for Burger King. Uh, we've read the staff report, we agree with the recommendations and, um, are available for questions.
Questions of the applicant? I have, I have one. Do you guys do outdoor seating to say or, I mean, I'm just, we asked before and, you know, I don't see it and I'm not saying you have to, but I... have to, but I'm just saying, do you typically?
It's been done, we're not proposing it for this particular location, but.
Are you going to ask him to put a stream through the property?
I was wondering if we were going to get a river through there.
I didn't see any rivers on this.
No, it's not water from property, that's why.
We're not proposing that at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this case? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any commission discussion concerning this? In that case, I will ask for a motion, please.
Chairman Gelfer, I'd like to make a motion to approve case 07-300-00004 and include all the stipulations and ask that staff work out the parking situation prior to presenting to city council.
All right, I have a motion, second from Commissioner Williams. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, ayes have it six zero. All right, our next case is case 07-200-00020, the Sarville and Yuma Avenue rezone. Public hearing to, a request to remove stipulation 10 from ordinance 2001-768 which currently limits the size of any single retail user to a maximum of 65,000 square feet on 20 acres of existing general commercial C2 zone property and to rezone approximately six acres from AU zoning district to the C2 zoning district generally located at the northwest corner of Sarville. And I am going to open the public hearing and David Canning is going to make the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The subject 26 acre property is highlighted in red on this exhibit and is generally located at the northwest corner of Sareville Avenue and Yuma Road. 20 out of 26 acres currently has a general commercial zoning designation and that area is highlighted in pink. And six of those 26 acres has an agricultural urban designation and that's highlighted or shown in green on this exhibit. Located to the south of the subject 26 acres is the Vanderbilt Farms, single-family residential subdivision. Located to the west is Canyon Trails Unit 3, a single-family low-density residential subdivision. Located to the east is Wildflower Ranch and located to the north is Agricultural Urban Zone Property. The applicant is making two requests. The first request is to remove stipulation number 10 from ordinance number 2001-768 which currently limits the size of any single retail user to no more than 65,000 square feet. The applicant's second request is to rezone six adjacent acres from the agricultural urban zoning district to the general commercial, to the general commercial zoning district. And this exhibit represents that request. The applicant is making these requests because he intends to submit a large retail user application for a 109,000 square foot Fries Marketplace. The current zoning of the existing 20 acre general commercial zone property would prohibit such an application because of an existing, because of an existing stipulation that limits the size of any single retail user to 65,000 square feet. The applicant has also stated that it is necessary to increase the size of the commercial acres, to increase the size of the commercial center from 20 acres to 26 acres so that it is large enough to accommodate a Fries Marketplace and the remainder of the planned commercial Included with the rezoning application is a conceptual site plan that shows the entire 26 acres. However zoning, or rather approval of the zoning does not constitute approval of the conceptual development plan, retail square footage, proposed meeting breaks, or driveway locations. Staff supports this rezoning request and believes that the combined 26 acres of general commercial zoning is appropriate at this location. The rezoning of the six additional acres will not prevent the vacant property to the north from developing residentially as envisioned by the general plan. Staff also supports the removal of stipulation number 10 from ordinance number 2001-768 because the city now requires this middle of a special use application for all retail users that exceed 100,000 square feet. The large retail user special use application was not in place when the 20 acre property received its general commercial zoning back in 2001. And the criteria for a large retail user includes substantial site and architectural design standards which are intended to ensure quality development and to reduce the impact of big box development on adjacent property. The citizen review meeting was held on September 17th at City Hall. Approximately 10 residents attended that meeting. At the meeting, a family member, or family members who own property to the north of the property opposed the proposal because they believe the addition of a Fries Marketplace would create a regional commercial center where a neighboring commercial center was originally contemplated. They were also concerned that the rezoning would leave a portion of the property aborted by commercial on two sides. The applicant has had several discussions with the family that owns property to the north since that meeting. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Okay, questions of staff? Mr. Lacks.
David, the, the issue on removing stipulation 10, is that just for this specific case? So are we talking about just an exemption under the zoning ordinance for this specific case or are we talking about permanently and forever getting rid of stipulation 10 from the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commercial, the request is to permanently forever get rid of stipulation number 10.
For this case.
For this case, right, that would apply.
Other questions? Commissioner Williams?
As it is today, is it, is it true that there could be two 65,000 square foot retail users side by side, but not one 110,000 square foot retail user?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bay?
Just one quick question, David. Could you elaborate a little bit more on the concerns of the citizen who was talking about preliminary uses that were defined and, and kind of illustrate for me what it is he's really saying because I didn't quite understand that.
Okay. I'd like to direct your attention to this aerial photo exhibit which shows the 26 acres that are under consideration tonight. The landowners to the north had concerns about the removal of stipulation number 10. They thought that removing that stipulation would create a more intense commercial center where, more intense or regional commercial center whereas a neighboring commercial center was originally envisioned for that property. Had concerns about traffic and the applicant has had a number of meetings with those neighbors and it's possible that he has reached some type of agreement with them on this case and I would defer to the applicant for them to speak more about that.
Okay, and I have one more question for you, David. When I look at this exhibit, and maybe again, this is just the way parcels are split or laid out, but I'm seeing this one, two, three, four parcels to the north of this facility. Are these, especially the two to the, to the northwest, they look like they'll be landlocked without some sort of ingress egress associated with that. And since this particular case provides just for the one, the one facility, how are we addressing that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that's, that's another question. There's actually an existing 20-foot wide easement that allows access from Sareville Avenue to these parcels. If they are developed in the future, if these four parcels are developed in the future and they're assembled as one property, they would be able to get access from Hadley Streets and 164th Drive. And now provide proper access.
It might be easier to see within the booklet that you received.
I never got it, I'm sorry. I didn't get the booklet.
It's a little bit more detailed and the two, the two adjacent stubb streets that Mr. Canning was referring to maybe show up a little bit there in that graphic.
Next page.
One David has on the screen now. David, may I point those out again?
This is the Hadley Street Extension.
Oh, oh, sorry.
That's the Hadley. This is 164th.
Okay, but that's going through a residential neighborhood, right into a commercial?
Actually, this, this is shown in the general plan as residential.
Agricultural right now, right?
It's, right, the existing zoning.
So.
But ultimately it would be residential.
So, so these will become residential, not, not commercial or industrial?
If developed according to the general plan.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, now's an opportunity for the applicant to come up and speak. Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Ed Bowles, 702 East Osborne. I'm here on behalf of the Shear family. They've owned the property for a good long while and have worked hand in glove with city staff for a good long while on how to go about working through various issues with the city and developing the property. We appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. Staff is recommending approval subject to 21 stipulations, all of which are acceptable to us. Mr. Chair and members of the commission, I turn to you for your guidance as to whether you would like me to just highlight on some quick points or make a full presentation in light of the staff recommendation and.
Highlight.
The indication, do the highlights. I hear you. As you know, most of the site is already C2. It's a very natural location for commercial development. Expanding it in this manner makes a great deal of sense from a variety of perspectives. Importantly, we recognize that tonight is one step in many steps that need to take place before fries or other development can occur on this property. We recognize we need to go through the SUP processes in order to deal with a store the size of Fries whereas, as was pointed out, we wouldn't have to if we had two 65,000 square foot stores. In addition to that, as you're probably aware, under the large retail user processes, if that SUP is approved and we come back through site plan approval, it's not only staff's site plan approval, but as you know, it involves commission and council site plan approval as well. So this is the first of what we had envisioned to be several times that your commission would see it, not only through the SUP and site plan processes, but just like your two prior cases, if we had drive-throughs for any reason, they would be a part of a use permit process and so on. Having said that, again, we think this makes a great deal of sense. It's reflective of good, of a good development opportunity to put the buildings further back from the street and so on. It also provides the opportunity to use the SUP process which has protections in it that was not in place in 2001. We'd request your approval and accordance with staff's recommendation.
Questions of the applicant? Commissioner Lortano.
I commend you for bringing retail there because south of ICE 10, Goodyear is in desperate need of grocery stores. I'm just wondering, do you have a plan knowing about when you look to break ground and get fries up?
If we're successful through this C2 and stipulation deletion process, we would hope that that gives Fries all of the confidence that they need to have us then come back through as expeditiously as possible with the SUP processes and site plan approval processes. I don't know what that translates into as to how long it takes to get the plans done and through your processes and council processes, but my indication is that the interest is strong to proceed as expeditiously as the processes and the economy will allow.
That's good to hear.
Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, it was mentioned that, that your client had negotiated some negotiations or meetings with the residential users to the, or owners to the north. Can you comment on those? Were there, did we alleviate their fears? Did we make concessions to them?
I personally have not been in those meetings, but let me tell you my understanding of the nature of the discussions and they've discussed a variety of things. Setbacks, buffers, this and that and the other thing, including obviously there's substantial setback and buffer provided along this property line and this property line and so on. More importantly perhaps is that there's been preliminary discussions about the possibility of a land trade and I do not want to represent that that's been accepted by the, by the representatives of the Shears family that would be involved in either accepting or rejecting that land trade. But the essence of it, and we can go into more detail if you want, is, is this property is owned by the Shears LLC, the same entity that owns this property. This property is considering being traded for this property which is owned by members of the Shears family. The, what would then occur is because, and in fact, maybe this would make more sense. And again, emphasizing this is, I'm not representing this as being a done deal, but if we look at the pink property, that's the property which is, which is owned by the Shears family through the, through the Yuma-Sareville LLC. The dashed line represents what's already zoned, the solid line represents the six acres. The Shear family also owns this orange property and different members of the Shears family own this property, this property, and this property. The preliminary discussions about the possibility of a land trade involve trading the orange piece for the blue piece. The net effect being then the Shears family would own the three parcels across here and the Shear family would own these contiguous properties. If that occurs, I think that's, that's a good thing. If it doesn't occur, we recognize through site planning and other aspects of working with your staff and your commission and council, appropriate setbacks and buffers and roses and trees and other kinds of things is what would need to occur.
Thank you.
Other, other questions of the applicant? I have, I have one comment that I want to bring up. I know this is, you know, with the large retail user ordinance, we'll have another opportunity to visit this project if it becomes 109,000 square foot fries, but I do want to bring up the drugstore drive-through on the front of the building is not something that has traditionally been done in Goodyear and I do not, I, I want to encourage Fries to think of an alternate location for this, especially possibly a drive-through where the shops be or are located on the, on the side of the building and then possibly relocate the shops be pad so that it better fits in. And I'll just leave the comment as something that needs to be addressed. I don't want it to be forgotten and then mess up the deal at the last minute.
Mr. Chairman, we hear you that it is an issue. As we discussed a moment earlier, this kind of a configuration has been done elsewhere here in the valley and my understanding successfully, we'd worked on the zoning of that years ago. That may be helpful to the discussion, it may not be all inclusive to the discussion, but we clearly hear that you want us to work with staff and your commission on how the drive-through works, whether it's here or in some other location and we're forewarned of that being an issue.
Okay, well, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Does anybody from the public want to speak on this item? Would you, have you filled out a card or would you, would you please come up and identify yourself and Mr. King Jr., could I ask you to grab a card from outside and bring it to this nice lady so she can fill it out or? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Trainer. We live on Hadley Street. We're, I don't know how you use this thing, but.
This point on the, there, where your finger is.
This is us right here.
Okay.
Now, one of the reasons we moved out here about a year and four months ago was to get away from the lights of commercial areas. And what I want to know is if they have this land swap, the land there that's closest to our house, what is that going to become? Is that still going to be residential?
Yes, according to, the, all of the land that is to the north and to the west of the, the large retail user that you see identified there, according to the city's general plan, is recommended for residential and would continue to be residential recommendation. So the land. So the land swap, if a land swap occurs, swapping residential acreage for residential acreage, it just makes it easier to develop because it's one contiguous piece instead of two separate pieces.
Okay, if they were to develop that area to the north and sort of leave this area to the northwest, what's going to happen to it? I mean, it seems to me the logical thing is for them to try and rezone that commercial when all is said and done.
Not going to happen.
And how do we know that?
I, because, because I'll tell you, the process would be, one, they would have to come back for, whoever owned it would have to come back for a general plan amendment, and this, I'm not sure whether this would be a major or a minor, but it would have to go through the same process that you're seeing here, and it's based on the applicant coming to the city and telling us why it would be beneficial to the city for that to change from commercial, from residential to commercial. What you have here is commercial land that was 20 acres of commercial land, and what is being done is expanding it to 26 acres so that it can be better utilized for an appropriate retail use. But the rest, but the other part of the land, I won't say, you know, it's 99% that it's not going to happen to go commercial. It doesn't make sense in this area, and most of the residents around there, I think, would object strongly to an expanded 40-acre commercial site.
Okay. Now, the green area that's up there...
Yes, ma'am.
Is that some kind of landscaping, a buffer zone, sort of so-speak?
Daycare.
That's a daycare facility, but it's a maybe.
A maybe.
You'd have to talk to the developer. I mean, this is conceptual only.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Are there any, are there any other people from the public that would like to speak? Please come, Ed, do you want to make a comment? Or do you want to make a comment concerning this?
I might have to make two comments.
You might have to, okay. Sir, thank you very much. Would you identify yourself for the commission?
Dennis Duncan, 16466 West Durango Street in Vanderbilt Farms.
Okay.
I'm the rep, I'm the president of Vanderbilt Homeowners Association. I'd just like to tell you that Mr. Shermer contacted us early in this project, came out to our meetings and met with us to ask us if there was any questions or anything that we had, any input we wanted into this, and he's, so far, we have had hardly any con, you know, any negative feedback on this project. We know that there's going to be something commercial or going on that, on that thing, and we would, you know, everybody kind of likes the idea of having a Fries marketplace, not an old Fries, but a new Fries, and, you know, to maybe not have apartments or something like that, so we're in favor of it.
All right, well, thank you very much. I want you to know that the commission and staff had recommended that Mr. Shermer talked to Vanderbilt Farms when we first started hearing about this, and so we appreciate your comments and we appreciate the fact of you coming down to this meeting when you could be out Christmas shopping. Thank you. Does anybody else want to comment? Ed, do you want to, oh, sir, come on up.
Ed Doherty, and I'm a future resident of Vanderbilt Farms, but we're excited to see this come in. We're glad to have that. We're presently living in Goodyear up at Stray Mountain Ranch, and we have to travel right now about 10 miles to get to the nearest market, so we're glad to see this. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for coming. All right, Ed, your turn. Mr. Fries, take note of that, please.
We certainly agree with everything that was said by the last two speakers.
All right.
With, with respect to, I believe it was Mrs. Trainer, if I understand correctly, I want to emphasize or reemphasize that, as I mentioned before, this proposed land trade on this parcel, which translates into this parcel, is not a done deal. Secondly, if it comes to fruition, I can assure Mrs. Trainer and this commission, just as you said, that anything that happens on that property has to come through your staff, the commission, and council. And I can, with all confidence, say that whatever happens on that property is going to need to be compatible with the neighboring uses, which includes the neighboring uses to the west, which are the single-family. Standing here, not knowing whether or not the land trade comes to fruition, we can assure whatever happens will be compatible with respect to any concern with lighting. We're very confident that under the city's lighting ordinance, lighting would be carefully controlled, downward directed, shielded, all of those kinds of things. Whether we end up providing some retention in here or what uses exactly we provide in there, we don't know for sure standing here, but it's something that, big picture-wise, we think the land trade makes sense, and just like we know, we'll have to come back with lots of other steps on the rest of the site. If and when we know whether or not we'll control this property, we'll have to go through the whole processes on that as well, including neighborhood outreach and so on.
All right, Ed, we know you'll, we'll hold you to the higher standard, Mr. Shermer, you're being warned. All right, any other questions of the applicant? In that case, I am going to close the public hearing and ask for any commission discussion concerning this item. Is there anything that the commission wishes to say or put on the record? Okay. In that case, I would ask for a motion on this case, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case number 07200000020, request to remove stipulation number 10 from ordinance number 2001-768 and to rezone six adjacent acres from the AU zoning district to the C2 zoning district.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lax and a second from Vice Chair DeBrocker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, eyes have it, 6-0. All right. Thank you. Thank you, neighbors, for coming and public for coming. We appreciate seeing you here. All right, I'm going to open case number 0720000005. You might have missed a zero there, but Australia Mountain Ranch Golf Village Parcel 5.4 rezone, and it's a public hearing requesting to amend the designated land use for parcel 5.4 in Australia Golf Village Planned Area Development from open space to medium-low-density residential, generally located on 9.82 acres, one-quarter mile southwest of the intersection of West Star and San Miguel, and the applicant is Newland Communities. And I'm going to open the public hearing, and Rick Williams is going to make the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you indicated, this is a request to amend a 9.8-acre portion of the approved Golf Village PAD, which is located off of San Miguel Drive and the future West Star development. Now, San Miguel Drive runs along here, it connects over with Australia Parkway. This area that you see running along this red parcel, which indicates the area that's being amended tonight, is the future West Star Drive alignment. The current designation for this 9-point acre parcel is open space. The amendment would designate this as low to medium-density residential with one to two dwelling units per acre, which would bring it in consistent with the Goodyear general plan. Now, as you can tell, this is, this right here is the 17th, 17th green, and this would be the 18th fairway of the Stray Mountain Golf Course. Parcel 5.4 is a, is a basically undisturbed, undulating area, which is, with an undisturbed natural habitat. Newland is proposing eight single-family custom home lots on this 9-point acre site. Lot size will range in size from one acre to 73,000 square feet. Now, in order to maintain that, that undulating, unaffected area, what the Newland Communities is proposing on their preliminary plats is to, two things. One, to add building envelopes on each of the existing lots, and to also add what's called a starter pad. And what a starter pad is, it will be, it will be a graded area with inside the building envelope area. It will be kind of a starting point for each one of these lots, and that'll enable us to do a couple of things. One, it will provide access to the lot and a starting point for, for future construction, but more importantly, it will keep future developers from coming in and just tearing up their way in to get to those building envelopes in which they're going to develop on. Just would like to, folks over at Newland, and I hope this comes through a little better on your computer, please. They provided an illustration here, just trying to depict how development will occur on these lots. Now, the lot that you see in front of you is lot number seven of that plan, of that preliminary plat that I just showed you. When we're talking about the, the building envelopes and the starter pads, lots number seven and eight are the two that are affected mostly by the elevation changes in this subdivision. So if you, they've kind of given you an idea around here. Now, I would say that the building envelope does not match exactly, but it gives you a pretty good indication of how it would work. We're looking at lot number seven, which would be lot number seven here. Over here shows the terrain and how it works. It shows how the building pad would be in there, and then the south elevation shows you development, how it occurs with the natural terrain. By adding the envelopes, it forces development to adhere to the terrain versus, you know, grading the terrain to manage the development, is, I think, maybe a simpler way to put that. We conducted a citizen review meeting on December 4th, 2007. There was no participation in that meeting, so certainly there was no opposition. I've had a couple of phone calls since then regarding just inquiring as to what was going to happen there and what they were proposing. There was no opposition voiced over the telephone as well. Staff is recommending approval of the rezone and the preliminary plat that you have in front of you this evening, subject to the stipulations contained in this NAST report. That concludes my presentation, and applicant as well as himself are available for any questions.
Okay, before, before we open questions for the, for staff, I want to make a comment for the record that in addition to the case for the rezone, we are listening to arguments for case 0507500008, which is the preliminary plat for this parcel 5.4. So we will not have a duplicate set of presentations, just for the record. Okay, now I'll open it to questions of staff. Any questions of staff? Rick, do you think you could, is, is, is this, is this part of the rezone? I'm specifically looking at the slope analysis diagram, and I, and I guess what I wanted to ask you is maybe you could put that up for the public record so, and maybe draw in on that parcel seven and eight so that I think people will see how we're not going to rip the mountain apart?
I will do my best.
Or maybe our...
Oh, that's a much better one.
Better, yeah, see?
Can y'all see that?
Okay, could you explain for the public and for the record the different color shading and what it indicates?
Yes. Sir, the darker red that you see here are your higher elevations with your steeper slopes, generally slopes that are over 20%. As you start to see, the lighted areas comes down, come down in this location, you're starting to see, not relatively flat, but let's say, less undulating. If you notice on, on what we're looking at here is lot number eight, the building envelope sits right along here, and basically they're, they're putting that building envelope in the flatter portion of the development. Now, that doesn't say that when they come in and they build it, portions of that house can't start to climb up that hill. What it does say is that they won't be able to come in and cut that hill out in order to fit a pad in on a larger, for a larger square footage home and taking out that slope. Does, Mr. Chairman, does that answer the question?
Yeah, and could you zoom out a little bit on this di, this, because this is the first time we're getting to see this. I just want to see what, basically the same situation is taking place on lot one, is that correct also?
Yes, there is. Over in this location over here, you see, you know, a little steeper slope there in the building envelope located just to the east of it, staying away from the slope that's over 20%.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Loretano.
Can I follow up on that with the pads? Is there a timeframe that people have to build on those, or can we just have these graded pads just sitting out there for years and years on end? Or do people actually have to build so many years after they...
That's a good question. I would defer to the gentleman from Newland to answer that question.
Okay, any other questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Bay?
Just one comment. I'm trying to think back when this originally came to us, that we had this large amount of open space that was set aside for, for this particular property. And while this is just a small component, I'm a little concerned that we might be seeing more of this as we go along. And yes, we have a 15% requirement, but the standard was higher for this particular established pad, and so I'm really kind of voicing my concern about the destruction or, or shall we say, the minimal chopping away of this open space that was expected to last forever.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, I think that's an excellent observation, and I would, I would just point out that in the Golf Village PAD, there's over almost 500 acres of open space, which equates to 38%. And yes, we, they are requesting to take 9.8 acres of that, and I don't know the percentage and how that would translate, but within the Golf Village PAD, there is still an essence of 37% open space even, even after this rezone.
I'd like to amplify, follow up on what staff had. In recent cases, cases that have come before the commission, that Newland has presented, both in south of this area, they have radically expanded the open space that they're making available to the community. So I think we're, this is, we're not, we're not taking little slices of open space back, you know, they, they've stepped up and expanded open space, and now they're asking for some other areas that maybe we can develop in a better sense. And this is, this is very high-end property. I mean, this is going to be some of the top things that we're going to see.
I understand that.
And I think this is something that, I think your concerns are well justified, but I don't think we're, they're asking for more than they deserve.
Okay, well, I'm just, for the record, that is my issue. That is my concern. I'm fine with this particular one. I just don't want us to continue to see, see that happen.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, let me invite the applicant to come up and make a presentation, or, excuse me.
Prior to doing that, and maybe the applicant can expand on this, I wanted to correct relative to the starter pads. The starter pads are not the full building envelope that Rick described. They are much smaller than, on the one lot number eight, for example, the starter pad is only a very small portion of that building envelope, and maybe the applicant or the applicant's engineer can explain the purpose for these starter pla, pads a little bit better than maybe staff did.
All right, Rick. You're down, you're down, let's get the, let's get the Newland representative up here now, please.
Thanks, Rick.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is David Prescott. I'm an employee of Newland Communities. I'm actually the director of planning and design for Australia. And also with me I have today is Chuck Kader, who is our engineer with Hunksticker and Associates, and both of us would be glad to answer questions, and I think I will start off by first of all saying that we agree with the staff report and we agree with the staff recommendation, so we don't have a problem there. I would like to address a couple of questions that just came up. First, from Loretano.
You got it.
Commissioner Loretano, thank you. And the question on pads, and I'll also address... And the question on pads, and I'll also address Bob's comment. The answer on pads is when the development comes in, they put in the roads, the small private drive in there, which is only 50 feet wide. The pads don't get developed until they're ready to develop the house. These are not production home subdivisions. These are custom lots. So these pads will not be sitting there graded. And for example, when you're looking at... You're looking at possibly seeing all of this parcel graded and all of this parcel graded and all that parcel graded. And you're right, that would look like heck. And quite frankly, under our custom design guidelines, that's not allowed. So first of all, it wouldn't get graded until they're ready to develop the house on a parcel-by-parcel basis. The next thing is, in addressing Bob Coon's comment, is that we will further restrict these pads for development in our custom design guidelines. And I'll pull out a segment of them. One thing that's interesting about... When you get to work as a master developer, you have a lot more control over what gets developed and how it gets developed than even the city does. The planning department can control what happens with inside the development envelopes and the setback lines. Newland can come back in and set a development area within these custom lots. This is exactly what we do with a specific intent to protect the natural vegetation and natural environment around it. So you mentioned parcel one and parcel seven and parcel eight. All these parcels will have a defined development area. I think we'll pull them back away from the golf course a little bit. And that envelope right there is only allowed, like, 25% of the entire parcel gets to be this development envelope. And another 10% for, which is for the actual house footprint itself, another 10% for hardscape. Then anything that inside that development area that is not house or hardscape and has been disturbed in any way, and most of the property will be, most of the lot will be just natural vegetation, natural terrain. And if that area's been disturbed, it has to be completely re-vegetated. So you don't end up a lot of scarring. You don't end up with a parcel that's been graded and sitting there for two or three years and looking like heck. So it happens on a parcel-by-parcel basis. And we have fairly tight guidelines. And when the properties come into us, they have to design the houses to match up the terrace to house with the terrain. And we have, you know, the guidelines in the zoning ordinance allows a 30-foot height limit. We only allow 24-foot high. And when the project comes through, each house comes through, it comes through our design review committee. And then, when we get done, then it goes to the planning department for design review. So there's a lot of hoops they have to jump through besides this PAD and the preliminary plat and the final plat. So... And I was trying to think on the... If I may, Chairman, one other comment that Commissioner Bay made. In fact, we have, since Newland has bought the property, we have reduced the number of units and added open space consistently. This road coming through... This West Star Road coming through this part of the property was part of the original 1999 PAD. We have developed... It's a loop that goes all the way around the entire golf course. We have built the southern half of the loop. Now we're going to have to build the northern half of the loop. We just approved the bids. So we'll be starting development of this road next year. And I believe in this whole northern area here, this property right here is in the general plan for residential development, just this one small area. And that is the only portion in this northern area where these little foothills are where we'll have any development of all. So, Mr. Chairman, that...
Okay. Commissioner Laura Tano?
Can I ask about other issues now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go for it.
I'm one of your residents up in Australia Mountain Ranch. I've lived there for five years. And every year we hear, "There's a grocery store. There's a grocery store." We have a sign. You knew this was coming, didn't you? As someone who read your proposal the night after I had to drive 20 minutes down the hill to a drugstore to get medicine for my kid, drive 20 minutes back up at 9:30 because the little Quickie Mart had closed and doesn't carry that, I have a problem with that. If I could see stem walls, see grading, but right now where the grocery store is going to be, all I see is landscape materials. I can't honestly see... That is one problem I see with approving any more development up there until you get something built. You've got to get something started to get my vote, to be honest with you. I have a concern, and I know a lot of my neighbors have that same concern. It's a long trip down that mountain, I'll tell you. My other concern is, again, you've got so much development and so many houses getting improved at either 5:30 at night or approximately 8, 8:30 in the morning. You've got a four-way stop there. You're going to put more houses there. That backs up. I mean, we're getting a little awituki out there to get to Australia. Cotton Lane's not going to help that. It's on San Gabriel and Australia. And those are two of my really great concerns. And I need to see some of this addressed, especially the commercial, before I can honestly give you... I love your product. I love your... I love how you've set it up. I would vote for this if you had a store. Start me a store. I will vote for you. See something move. But that is my biggest problem. I know that's a concern of a lot of people up there. You market to young families, and there's no place to get anything for young families up there. You've got to drive to the Safeway is the closest store. So I do have a concern with that. And I'd like to hear you address that. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laura Tano. Well, obviously, you know that we have the marketplace coming in with bashes. And that's gone through... I think, I'm not sure if it's gone completely through the site plan approval, through the planning department, but we have elevations. We have the... Basically, the project's approved. I'm not sure if it's gone through all the hoops of the city. It's basically been approved. The deal with commercial development and retail development, and it can be Australia, it can be anywhere, is you have to have house tops with population. And population, it really is a surrogate for expendable income. You have to have the house tops expendable income to drive the retail. We have now achieved that threshold where we can now support retail, a full neighborhood shopping center, anything worse. Matter of fact, we're going to be marketing several commercial properties up there because we have hit around 10,000 population. We now have sufficient population, sufficient expendable income to drive the commercial retail. So you will now see a lot of commercial retail coming in with bashes and then other commercial development right behind it. And this question is not one I have not heard before. I used to work for Bob Coon's at the City of Glendale. This is exactly the same question that came up for the people up along Bell Road. And what I told them then was, once you get enough residential development, expendable income up there, the commercial will come. And then they were complaining about restaurants. And I said, "Then the restaurants will come, and then you can't stop them. Go take a look at Bell Road now." And that was only 10 years ago that was nothing up there. So it is coming. And I recognize what you're saying. We've gotten past that threshold, and it'll come in quickly now.
I saw you for two other people this morning that... Or this evening that said they are moving from there to Vanderbilt Farms. I'll be honest, guess what I did the day after I drove there? I drove around Vanderbilt Farms to see what was for sale. So you may start losing your rooftops. So get us some commercial, please. That's my comment.
Just for the...
There has been an site application made for site plan review and approval for what I think is called Australia Marketplace, which is the Elliott Road in Australia Northwest Corner Shopping Center with the grocery store. So that is under review by staff at this time.
Just for the record, from when a plan is under review until the grand opening is about 15 months? Can you give us an estimate, ballpark?
I would say that's probably within a ballpark. I mean, a year of construction at least. You know, probably a little bit longer than that, and then a few months for our review.
So 15, year to a year. Year and a half is probably when we're going to see a grand opening, give or take, a month or two, for information purposes only.
Yes. I can say also that we have pre-application last week with a commercial developer looking at three other parcels within Australia to follow up what Mr. Prescott said, that, you know, they are having interest in the area.
Any other comments or questions for the applicant? Anybody else? Would anybody from the public like to speak on this? Or anybody with the applicant that would like to also make a comment? I see no one. In that case, I am going to close the public hearing on the rezone request and ask for any commission discussion on this. Ms. Laura Tano, are you...
I've pretty much said what I had to say. I'll be quiet now.
No, that's fine. That's fine. I can relate to being in a restaurant dry zone. In that case, let me ask. I'd like to get a motion for the rezone, which is case 07200005, which is the rezone of parcel 5.4 of the Golf Village. Motion, please?
So moved, Chairman.
I got a motion from Commissioner Bay and a second from Commissioner Lacks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it, five to one. And Ms. Laura Tano, for the record, your objection?
What I previously stated, the lack of commercial.
Lack of commercial. All right. In that case, I am going to open the case of 07500008, Australia Mountain Ranch, parcel 5.4, preliminary plat. And I'm going to open the public hearing. Staff presentation is from Mr. Williams. Anything new?
No, sir.
From the applicant, anything new? No. Okay, anybody from the public like to speak on this? No. I'm going to close the public hearing. Any commission questions or anything? All right, I'm going to ask for a motion on the preliminary plat, please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Case recommend, case 07500008, Australia Mountain Ranch, Golf Village, parcel 5.4, preliminary plat. As presented.
I have a motion from Vice Chair DeBrocker and a second from Commissioner Bay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, the motion passes five to one. And Commissioner Laura Tano's objections are on the record. Do we... Do you guys want to take a break? Or do you want to just...
What do we have? Let's get it over with.
Keep going, all right. We're on a roll. Okay. Next order of business, let me clean out my mess here, is I'm going to open the public hearing for case number 07200010, Australia parcel 3.14, a public hearing to change the land use designation of parcel 3.14 from elementary school and commercial to patio homes on 14.4 acres, generally located in northwest corner of Australia Parkway and San Miguel Drive. And that's the only thing. And Rick Williams is going to present that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you noted, this is a request by Newland Communities to amend 14.42 acres in the approved Phase One Australia PAD. Now, this is located off of San Miguel Drive and Australia Parkway, which on this map, this is Australia Parkway Northwest Corner, and this will be San Miguel Drive. Just located to the north here, this is a church site that is currently... This would be the Echo Ridge Single Family Subdivision. To the south here would be the open space zone part, I believe. And this would be the Highland Single Family Residential Subdivision. To the east here, we have a future commercial as well as higher density multifamily down here. And to the west, we have an open space wash there and the, I believe that would be the Oasis Single Family Residential Subdivision. The current designation on this property is... It's currently zoned... Excuse me for having my exhibits out of order. Of the 14 acres, 7.86 of it is for the elementary school and 6.56 for the commercial office, as well as, I believe, is 4.3 open space in there as well. And the open space portion of it comes down along that portion of it, along San Miguel and Australia Parkway. If I was a little bit better exhibited that. The Phase One Amendment in 1988 designated the parcels the current zoning that it has now. Subsequently, the West Star Elementary School was developed south of this parcel and an elementary school site is no longer needed. It was also determined with the power easement that runs through here, which basically cuts through this portion of the development right here, commercial access would be somewhat restricted. And probably last but not least, the 1988 amendment to that plant, to that planned area development was not in conformance with the general plan that we have today. The amendment that we have before you this evening would bring that into conformance with the existing general plan. The applicant has not submitted a preliminary plat at this time, but they have provided in your packets some development standards, some conceptual housing, as well as a conceptual lotting plan for a couple of the different products that they've outlined in your narrative there. We had a citizen review meeting on December 4th, 2007. We've had... We, again, we had zero participation at that. I've had numerous phone calls regarding this particular parcel since we posted it on the site for this meeting. Basically, folks were interested in what was intended to go on the site and what Newland was planning for in the future here. Gave them a brief description of what was going to happen in that location. To a T, they were all in favor of it, and there was no opposition voiced over the telephone. Now, before I get to my recommendation, just to go back to the aerial map for just a moment. We've included the stipulation that's in your staff report that this be in compliance with the Phase One PAD that was amended back in 1988. However, a light signal warranted at this location. City believes that at some point, a signal is going to be warranted at that location. It is not covered in the stipulations contained in the amendments that happened back in 1988. So it's not contained in amendment here. We would request that we go on the record at this point saying that there needs to be further discussion with the Newland Communities to address light signal at that location in future time. We would certainly need to accomplish that before we got to counsel on the 28th of January 2008. That concludes my presentation this evening. We are recommended approval subject to the stipulations contained in the staff report and additional conversation regarding the light signal at that location. Newland Communities is here. That concludes my presentation. Available for any questions?
Questions of staff?
I actually didn't have any questions. You said, Rick, that there was another school that has already been constructed, and so this site is no longer needed by the school district?
Yes, sir. It's about a mile and a half south, and it's located someplace right down here, Commissioner Bay. They originally reserved this for a school site, and then for a reason unbeknownst, they developed it in alternative location.
Okay, so the school district's fine with this, no problem?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, I'm good.
Other questions? Rick, I have one question. You answered it, and I missed it. The parcel to the north that's open space right now? Yeah, that. What's going to happen there? What's that going to change to?
Sir, that is not part of the request this evening. It is zoned for... Oh, there it is. Right now, that's reserved for a church site, and I believe it's going to stay that way, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Newland want to come up and make a presentation or answer questions? Any questions of the applicant? Could you identify yourself again for the record, please?
David Prescott with Newland Communities, 2850 East Calback Road.
Questions of the applicant?
Just a comment. I think it's a wonderful elevation. This is a beautiful area. I commend you for the work on that.
Commissioner DeBrocker?
Sir, I'm looking at exhibit page 13. And this is the cluster exhibit on the top portion. And on the bottom is the townhome exhibit. And I noticed the power line diagonals through that both of the concepts that are presented. And I noticed on the cluster concept, most of your drawings were two-story on the cluster and two-story on the townhome. And the line that's coming through this way, power lines, are they going to be two-story facilities in both the upper portion, the cluster? lines, are they going to be two-story facilities in both the upper portion, the cluster conceptual exhibit, or are those going to be one-story in the upper right-hand corner? And the same would be true for the upper right-hand corner of the townhome exhibit. There isn't enough space, is there, for a two-story under the power lines?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner DeBrocker?
Yes.
The broker. The, we don't know at this point if they're gonna be one or two-story. You know, they could be cluster, they could be townhouses, they could be DTAT single-family or OTAT single-family, and I've done single, single-story and two-story. In this case, for two-story, you would have plenty of room because the easement goes well beyond the edge of where the power lines are actually existing, and all the development, you cannot develop anything, any structures at all within that power line easement. So all development has to be outside that power line easement. So the houses, whether one or two-story, would not be in conflict with, with the power lines.
Okay, well, I was thinking more of an aesthetic thing. If you're living in a townhome or a cluster home, and you're looking right into the power line, I wonder if that could be given some thought?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner DeBrocker, it's interesting that when we've done development like this before, the power lines are so high, when you're close to them, you don't see them, honestly, even when you're along the road. We did some real nice kinda semi-custom homes, and they're adjacent to the big 230 KV power lines. When you get back further away, that's when you actually see them more, but we'll take that consideration when we go through preliminary plat and further discussions.
Yeah, well, I was thinking of someone paying a certain amount of money for a place, and saying, my gosh, there's a power line right here, and...
They're definitely gonna see them when they go look at this sample houses.
So give it some consideration.
We will do that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one more comment, if there's no more questions. Based on the previous discussion we had about the residential and commercial, I just wanna point out to all the commissioners that these homes could not possibly be built until after the shopping center is in place and open.
So, is that gonna change the rule?
Okay, any other comments? I, I wanna make a comment. I looked at both the, both of these conceptual designs, and to be honest with you, I really liked the townhouse, townhome exhibit. I have some real reservations with the cluster exhibit, especially with that cluster that's off to the, that's fine, okay? So be it. In that case, I'll just be quiet and finish my comments. Okay, does anybody from the public like to make a comment on this? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for a motion, please? If you have a motion on this case? Commissioner Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I move, we recommend approval of case number 07-200-00010, amendment to the approved planned area development for Australia phase one parcel 3.14.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second from Commissioner Lacks. Before I call for a vote, Rick, do we need a stipulation, or do we want, or will you add a stipulation on this traffic light study, so that when it gets to council, there will be some kinda stipulation in there, so they know that it's?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
Okay, alright. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Alright, five to one, the ayes have it, and obviously, it's a commercial, lack of commercial development?
I just need to make it consistent, so yes. I think it's a beautiful project, I will be happy once you have a store, I love it, it's beautiful, though.
Hey, principals stand up, especially when they're on the losing side. Thank you, Ms. Loritano. Alright, last case is, I'm gonna open the public hearing for case number 07-350-0007, Agua Fria High School, number five, special use permit, and the presenter is Mr. Williams also. Better rip, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, this is a request by the Agua Fria Unified School District, or High School District, to, for a special use permit for 1,600 student, roughly 1,600 student, high school on a 50-acre site located just east of Citrus Road, on the south side of Lower Buckeye Road, in this location outlined in red. Located around it are the La Jolla subdivision, which is directly north of it, which also contains an elementary school site, by the way. El Cidro to the south, Cotton Commons to the east. This little portion right here is what's left of, or the remaining parcel of the Citrus Ridge development. Levenson 160 here, Las Briesas, south and west, and the Poderia development that is north and west of this. Now, it is anticipated that enrollment for the school will be done kind of in a staggered, in a staggered type of way. I believe the first year, we're looking at freshman and sophomore students, freshman-only students, and so, you know, the second year, you'll have freshman, sophomore, third, freshman, sophomore, so forth, up until seniors. So having said that, the, the site will be developed in two phases. Constructed in phase one is everything that you see in this area, and I'll give you just a quick, little site association here. Lower Buckeye Road to the north, future 175th Avenue alignment to the east. This area here, now, you're showing the actual building itself, but this would be the remainder of the Citrus Ridge. El Cidro would be located to the south. Developed with phase one will be the, the school building itself, 175th Avenue, the staff parking, portions of the faculty parking, the bus drop-off, and the existing fire lane. Now, the building itself is located in the northeast portion of this quadrant. It's situated 50 feet from the, from the Lower Buckeye Road alignment, 240 feet from 175th Avenue. It is buffered to the south by open space, the future parking, and the bus drop-off, as well as the future tennis courts and, and the basketball courts here, and that's what separate, as well as a 100-foot WAPA easement that separated from the El Cidro development. Buffering it to the west are the future football stadium, baseball fields, practice fields, and other open athletic field amenities used in the association of recreational activities for, for the school. Now, in addition to the classrooms, you know, administration building, library, the things contained in a normal high school, also contained within this, these buildings will be food courts, gathering areas, courtyards, recreational areas, all located within the confines of the two-story complex. The development will be served by one archer, which is Lower Buckeye Road, and a minor collector, which will be developed to a 60-foot right-of-way. Faculty parking, there, there are three different parking areas located within this. The future student parking will be developed in phase two, along with when the juniors and seniors come to fruition there and start driving. Staff visitor parking here, and as well as the future faculty parking down there. It is anticipated that 177th Avenue will align with the alignment into the La Jolla Vista development, and this signal, and this area right here will be signalized somewhere in the future. The other two parking areas, the, the parent drop-off and the visitor parking, as well as the future faculty parking, will be serviced by 175th Avenue, which, as I said, will be a minor collector road. It should also be noted that 175th Avenue will dead-end at the property line here and will not continue into El Cidro. There will be no existing high school traffic flow that will proceed south out of this into the residential development flow. Now, the Cotton Commons development is located here to the east. It is anticipated that there will be one, possibly two entrances into that residential subdivision, but we have not seen a plan from them at this time. As well with future, future development, the phase two not only brings in the parking, but as we noted, it brings in the ball fields as well. Now, any, many of the, several of the fields, I guess I should say, would be, will be lighted ball fields. Athletic field lighting, as well as parking and security lighting, will be subject to the standards set forth in the Article 10 of the, of the outdoor lighting in the, in the zoning ordinance. For example, luminaries will be shielded. You know, spill light levels can reach more than one foot candle at residential property lines, on-off switches, things of that nature. I would point out one last thing, in, in that with the, once the phase two comes in and having the parking located in three different areas of the site plan, it is anticipated that the faculty parking will generate its highest number of trips before seven o'clock in the morning, because that's when teachers are required to be on-site. The future student parking and the parent drop-off, as well as visitor parking, it's anticipated that the highest trip levels will be generated at eight o'clock and between three and four o'clock in the afternoon. Thus, distributing the majority of the traffic flow through three different sections of the site at three different times. We had a citizen review meeting December 4th, 2007, we had a couple of the local property owners show up. They had general questions with regards to circulation patterns, when the school was gonna open. There was no opposition voiced at this project at that time. Now, section 411B of the zoning ordinance, this very specific criterion, which the special use permitted is evaluated and considered for approval by, by council, commission, and staff. Included in your staff reports this evening are the, is that specific require, are those specific requirements, as well as staff's evaluation of each of those? It is, it is our position that, that it, that this use permit, this application for use permit meets the requirement subject to that section of the zoning ordinance. We are recommending approval of the use permit. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Questions of staff? Mr. Bay?
I may have one, my mind's kinda bobbly right now.
Then I'm gonna take chairman's prerogative and ask my question, and then come back. Rick, on the, one of the, on the Citrus Ridge plan, there's a utility easement, and isn't there a power transmission line to the south of this, this whole site?
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, like on El Cidro, didn't they have a trail that was gonna be developed underneath the power line corridor? If memory serves me correctly, I, I thought there was, thought that whole power line corridor was part of a trail system that was being developed. And, and if so, what I wanna know is, will there be access from the trail into the fields and the park that the high school is being, that the high school's planning, or is the property gonna be walled off, you know, fenced off so that, you know, people can't use it during the other school time?
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir, you are correct, and I'm trying to, if I remember correctly, the El Cidro, that WAPA easement, it is part of an open space corridor, and I believe that there is a meandering path as well, or that may be a service road that runs through that WAPA easement.
Okay.
Now, as far as the, the school site itself, I believe that that will be fenced, the perimeter of that will be fenced. Certainly, there will be some form of access, you know, at this location down here, I don't see us walling off the end of the wall, but as far as the entire line of the, of the perimeter of the property, I don't believe that will be open to that, to that easement.
Okay, alright. Commissioner Bay?
No, I'm fine.
Alright, let me, if there's no other questions of staff, does the applicant wanna come up and make, at least for the record, make a presentation, or answer any questions?
I'm Gary Gable, 1843 South 221st Avenue. I'm the facilities and construction manager for the district, and I'm representing John Schmeddick tonight, and he had personal things he had to take care of. The school's always been a good neighbor, and we plan on continuing being a good neighbor. We do make our facilities open to the, the community, and we try to design them in a safe manner where, when we maintain the security for our students, visitors, and staff, and also have the community have access to them. If you have any questions, I'll have the entertaining.
Okay. Questions of the applicant? Okay, let me, let me just advise you to, as the, as your drawings get closer, you know, as your site plan goes to staff for further review, maybe we ought to bring up the El Cidro plan, so that we can know exactly what, what they're buff, you know, up against and what's gonna happen on that corridor. So let me just, I'll make that advisement to both of you. Is there any other comments that anybody wants to make? Anybody from the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any commission discussion on this? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask for a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case number 07-350-0007, a special use application to allow a public high school located one-quarter mile east of Citrus, along the south side of Lower Buckeye Road.
Alright, I have a motion from Commissioner Lacks and a second from Commissioner Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, the ayes have it unanimously, six-zero. Thank Ms. Loritano. And on that note, I will, I don't have to open the public session, but our last item is a work session on rural development policies.
You gotta stick around for this. You gotta do that. This is the yes committee, we're not working staff every day. Uh-oh. More work?
Do you want to, do you need the commission, the chairman, to take action with the fellow commissioners?
I've just passed out information on rural development in Sonoran Valley. The purpose of tonight's work session is to introduce you to the topic of rural development in Sonoran Valley, so that you can review the information, and then at a later commission date, we'll have a full discussion about this topic.
Is this like homework, Katie?
It's homework. Christmas homework, everyone gets it.
Will there be a test in January?
There might be.
A quiz, folks. So we, so, so you're not gonna go over this now?
I'm gonna quickly go over it, so you have enough information to review it, and then, as I said, we'll have a full discussion at a later time. So, as you know, the city annex Sonoran Valley, I believe in March of this year, when a city annex is an area, they have to designate a comparable zoning district to what they had while they were in the county. The city did do that, however, the city zoning districts are generally, have stricter development standards than the zoning districts of the county. Also, there are many policies and standards that exist outside of the zoning ordinance that affect rural development in Sonoran Valley. Since the annexation of Sonoran Valley, the city has received several requests for citing manufactured homes on individual lots in the area. Several of these requests had started the process in the county, so those applications for manufactured homes that were in the process of permit review in the county at the time of annexation were reviewed basically under county standards and finished through the process. So there were a handful of manufactured homes that have been approved since they had started with the county at the time of annexation. The Sonoran, while we were reviewing those permits, the staff discovered that there were unique characteristics for rural development in Sonoran Valley that our city standards and policies might not appropriately address these unique characteristics in the area. So it may be appropriate to revise some of our policies and standards to address rural development in Sonoran Valley, which is why staff is coming to commission to get direction on what you feel is appropriate, or may not be appropriate, to revise our current policies and standards. So staff has reviewed the current city policies and standards and reviewed... So staff has reviewed the current city policies and standards and reviewed what the county policies and standards were with regards to manufactured homes, water, wastewater, legal access, and fire requirements. And then we went ahead and came up with some different policy options that we could take that range anywhere from basically keeping our current city policies and standards to going to something closely resembling what the county standards have. And of course, we could, you're not necessarily limited to the options we set forth, but, you know, that kind of gives you some ideas of the different options we have. So as I said before, just go ahead and review the information. We'll come back at a commission meeting at a later time and have a full discussion on what may be appropriate to do for rural development in Sonoran Valley. So I can't answer any questions you might have.
Procedural question, Katie, but I'm going to, does any of the commissioners, Commissioner Bay?
Katie, I just want to understand why, why we're going through this and why this is specific for the Sonoran Valley. And I heard you say that there were permits already in the county, but then they got annexed in and so now we're dealing with that. So I, so what we're looking at here, is that to address just those particular instances or are we looking at a whole new policy just for this area?
Though, it is kind of two separate issues. We have already approved some manufactured homes that had been in the review process at the county since they had started the review process with the understanding that they would be falling under county regulations, so we felt that that was appropriate. But during that review, we realized how many standards and policies, since the city has mostly dealt with a suburban and urban area, that we just don't deal with many rural areas and our standards and policies just might not be appropriate. For example, you know, we always require that streets be built to city, full city standards, but the county doesn't require that, so there might be a disconnect. It may be appropriate to keep our city standards and may be appropriate to lax our standards a bit in the Sonoran Valley. The reason we single out the Sonoran Valley area is that this is a newly annexed area. The rural development character of the area is unique than other parts of the city. And some of these, you know, although it is of the understanding that they're coming into the city, some of the residents who were annexed may not have had a full understanding of the impact of what annexing into the city means. You know, that all these little standards that they just don't understand, they didn't necessarily know that annexing into the city meant they had to pave a road to be able to put a manufactured home.
Okay. So then, I'll tell you what my, my issue would be then, because I don't know what we're using as a measure. What's our meter here for deciding or determining for our next discussion? Should we do one thing versus another? And, go ahead.
No, I, I guess what I wanted to say was, from what I understand, our homework is, read page two and then the next time we discuss this, be able to vote on or express our opinions on policy one, policy two, policy three, or some other policy that we may, so that we can come into agreement, take a recommendation.
We did give what the city's current policies are and you've seen how the city develops and, you know, obviously you're very familiar with that. And then we gave the county policy and you probably are familiar with areas of the county that have developed. And so what we're asking for is, you know, how, how does the city want to grow in this area? I can, for our next discussion, we did contact other cities such as Surprise that has gone through the same growing process that we have. And I can get some more information about exactly how they went through this process, how they made their choices on how they wanted to move forward and get that information to you so, you know, maybe you can make your decision with, with examples of how other cities have handled this particular issue.
My concern is that we're applying this to an area and we have certain people who are going to be impacted by this. And then we're going to make a decision that's going to tell them, well, for example, you can only have one animal for 1,500 square feet and, you know, versus, oh, it's okay, you can have all of your animals. What's the criteria for determining that? And I'm sure we're all going to have varying opinions about what this should be. So that's why I was asking, do we have some sort of measure, something, I mean, something generated this? And, and I don't think I understand what it was. Was it the citizens themselves or what?
Mr. Future City Planning Manager. Mr. Schmitz. Well, I knew that. No, no, I mean, you're the, you're the, Mr. Long Range Planning Manager, Schmitz. Give it a roll.
Mr. Chairman, in response to Commissioner Bay's comments, the measure that we have today are the existing standards that we have in place. And I think our concern is, is that our standards are such that the folks that got annexed in the Sonoran Valley may not have been fully aware of the full impact of what those, what those standards would mean. And so, and we, at the same time, we have a situation where we had people who have already developed under county standards and, and very recently were allowed to complete development that was in process under the county standards. And so, the things that we are starting to experience is as we have people come in and say, well, I want to do the same thing, they hadn't started. And then, and our response at the current time is, you probably can't do it unless you dot every i and cross every t. So the question is that, if, what we're putting before you is, do we continue down that path or do we look at this area and add our standards and decide that we want to adjust them to some extent to accommodate the, perhaps what the expectations might have been of those in the Sonoran Valley upon annexation? When we annexed that area, as you know, we didn't annex just the property that was going to be developed in, under large holdings. There were other properties that were out there that the developer solicited to join in the annexation and, you know, we were glad that that happened the way it did. But we're also not sure what all representations were made by the developer in getting those petitions signed. So we're finding ourselves now in trying to administer this. Our codes and ordinances in this area faced with some questions and, and these are questions that are at the policy level and that's why we're bringing it to the commission and subsequently to the council to get direction as to which is the best way to proceed.
So, so then we're not looking at people who are there, they've got, I always say godfather, they've grandfathered. Are we not looking at people who have grandfathered rights because that's the way it was when they were there and then new people come in, you know, why, why should we say, well, just because they've got it, you've got it? That's, that's just kind of where I'm at.
And, and those are the types of questions that we're, are the type of input that we will be looking for.
Just to clarify, as Joe said, the private holdings there are over 20,000 acres and over 10,000 of which is what Montage has assembled for their master planned community. And all of that is north of State Route 238. So most of the, and so 10,000 acres is private and it's in various locations. But everything south of State Route 238 is where most of the more rural scattered development is with manufactured housing. And in the foreseeable future, probably 10, 20 years off, we probably won't have a water and sewer system south of State Route 238. So those individuals that live down there, if somebody wants, there's, there's lots down there and someone wants to develop one of those lots, there wouldn't be any provision for water and sewer. So do we want to take a hard stand and comply our current standards or do we want to have some hybrid from city standards and maybe county standards? So we're given three options to look at. That's where, where we're coming from. I mean, you know, we can continue to apply the city standards, but there's going to be a lot of people that are pretty unhappy with this. So do we want to, from a policy standpoint, do we want to take that position or do we want to do something different?
Are we proposing a work session then? Because this doesn't sound like something we want to just sit up here and kind of hold on.
Well, it's a work session. This is, this is basically...
That's why it's homework. You have to read this.
We'll have another work session in the future.
The issue is, is it sounds like we need to discuss it.
Yeah, this is why we're giving it to you. We're introducing it to you. These are policy options. So once we've come with a policy direction, you know, the commission and council would direct us, well, we like this policy, then we'd go back and we'd promulgate the regulations to implement that policy. So we've got several, we've got some steps to do.
Yeah, and it sounds like we're going to have a lot of discussion and I guess that's why I was concerned, are we going to do this in, like a regular? Oh, it's a work session?
Yeah, well, we can do it whenever. It'll be a public meeting. We have to do a public meeting.
I thought we'd close the doors and talk about it.
Why don't we do it?
Next year.
January, I think.
Homework, remember? Homework, you have to read, you have to read both pages.
16. January 16th is our next meeting and that's when we put it on the agenda, so you could be prepared to discuss it maybe at that time.
Katie, with, with, you'll give us another copy of this and the proposals, plus you're going, you said you would get some other?
We'll get some additional information. I'll do, I'll do some homework myself, so you won't be alone.
All right.
And get you some examples.
And it's not when the store is coming, okay?
This is way rural. There's not enough rooftops for stores.
You get the additional information. I don't know anything about Wells Community. What's the difference? If she could get information, because I can read the homework, but I don't know anything about that.
Definitely, we'll get some definitions and we'll even, I can talk to representatives of different departments and see if possibly some of them would be able to come. I'm volunteering them, of course, so I have to make sure they're available. But hopefully some other departments can come and answer some of those more technical questions.
From an agenda, or wait a second, let me talk to Bob. Bob, from an agenda point of view, could we have this earlier in the session than at the end?
So you're fresh?
So we're fresh?
Actually, as it looks today, we may only have actually one item for January 16th other than this.
Okay, so can we do the, I, I would rather, I think there's a lot of questions in the commission and issues that, you know, because I'm thinking of similar, similar issues as Gabe was talking. So can we do this first and kind of ban, you know, take some time and not get rushed on it? All right, thank you. Commissioner Williams?
I guess I'd like to ask one question and if I should save the question till the meeting, let me know. But if, if we would agree to recommend, I guess for want of a better term, I'll say relaxing some standards, is, is there a way to perhaps control the location of where we do that rather than to do it, you know, so that, so that if, if there's a prime piece of property out there that could be a fabulous development someday, that we don't preclude, do something that would preclude that from happening down the road?
Well, one thing I want to make sure, you want, the answer to that is yes. And also, just to make it clear, what we're talking about here is individual lot development. One property owner wanting to put his own home on his lot, not subdivisions, not even smaller five, six home subdivisions. So, you know, a large, you know, if, even if we change these policies, they wouldn't be changed for developers and housing developments. Those would still be under our stricter subdivision regulations.
Could, when you do something, when Katie, when you do homework, could you find out if any cities do this on a limited timeframe or something like that? You know, so, so that this policy doesn't, isn't in perpetuity, but might be, you know, a 20-year policy for the city and, and because development's going to change and, you know, it may sunset or something like that?
Yeah, typically cities provide sunset provisions, so at the end of the policy, they could reevaluate it. Yeah, and I mean, the city can always change their policy. There's, there's nothing that precludes the city from changing the policy.
That was just a...
Even without a sunset.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, I think this is something we need to look at because this is, you know, we're planning on a 20-year horizon or maybe even longer before real development starts getting down there.
And we've, by the way, Mr. Chairman, we wrestled with Commissioner Williams's question because that's our, that's my concern too. I mean, you know, how do you, how do you accommodate, you know, how do you accommodate some of it and in particular areas it might work and other areas it doesn't work? So how do you discriminate? And, you know, we try to apply our, I mean, try to apply rules in non-discriminatory fashion and not discriminate, so, but you have to be very careful in how you do that. So I share that concern.
This is going to be an interesting session.
Yeah, it is. It's not an easy question.
Any other staff communications?
Just that our next meeting is January 16th and obviously we won't have a meeting between now and the holidays, so I want to wish you a happy, joyous holiday season and a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much for the...
Happy New Year and enjoy your nuts there.
Is that supposed to tell us something?
There's no symbol, there's not a symbol.
I just want to inform the commission of one thing on, Harvey, do you want to tell everybody where the city center is?
Okay.
Just for information's sake, so we can...
And humor.
Before I do that, I think from the follow-up from our last meeting, the, we did receive a verbal information this week that the Imagine Charter School was going to withdraw their application for their special use permit, so, and they put the property owns for sale, so we won't see that come back, not by that company at least. Then on the city center, I mean, Joe should probably do this, he's probably more attuned to this, but we have the, we had six proposals on the city center. We had one proposal on the Performing Arts Center and a committee of city employees and consultant reviewed, we had two separate committees. One evaluated the city center proposal, narrowed it down to four out of the six proposals and then we went further and interviewed the four proposals, proponents or whatever, consultants, teams, and we narrowed it down to three to submit actual proposals to the city. So we expect those in March and then take action on those. And then on the Performing Arts Center, we only had one proposal and that individual or consultant team will also be submitting a proposal by, I think, March 2. Is that March or is that February? That one's, that one's expedited, so that'll be February.
All right. So does this mean they're actually entering into a contract, Harvey, and we're looking at design and groundbreaking it in their future?
Well, the, the purpose in this is, HDR's done some, basically took the specific area plan, which was very generalized, and they did some more, drilled down and did some more site planning, master site planning. But there still needs, so the consultant team will actually come up with a financing proposal, building, construction plans, infrastructure, the whole thing. They'll be the developer, financier, and it'll be a partnership with the city. So, yeah, as soon as we get a, as soon as we get a developer, we'll be joining forces with that developer and building something. Yeah, it helps to move fast as soon as we get a development team.
That's exciting. Thank you.
It is.
Any other staff communications, any other commission communications? Chairman wishes everybody a happy holidays and a motion to Mr. Williams?
We had a gentleman sit through this whole meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. King. It's appreciated. Thanks for coming as the, as the public. And the chairman will enter a motion to adjourn. Second?